Mr. Burks, are you good enough to lead us on the invocation?
Father Evan, we ask that you be with us today and guide us in our actions. We also ask that you watch over and guide President-elect Trump as he begins to select leaders for his cabinet in the various offices of the President and the federal government. We ask that you guide President-elect Trump in bringing our country together and making decisions to build our country and to lead international relations. All this we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Okay, are you good enough to call her home, please?
Mr. Burks, sir?
Here.
Mr. Donz?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Hilliard?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
And I need a motion for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I will make that motion.
Motion, is there support?
I'll...
Go ahead.
I'll support it.
Support by the train commission, I think? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we need a motion for consent agenda, minutes of the October 25th board meeting and also monthly appropriations for November. Be happy to make that motion. There's a motion for support. Anywhere possible. Okay, motion for support. Where to call her home?
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Donz?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Yes. Have to be retrained, okay?
Start this over.
Can't thank you guys too.
I get two of us.
Two folks now.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna use the gamble.
Wait to see if it's next to you.
Right.
Okay, that brings us up to public comment. And one, sign in, is Mr. Tyler Lappinen? Yeah, hopefully I said that correctly.
Yeah, close, close now. Sorry about that. Hello, everyone, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Tyler Lappinen. I'm the new Manistee DDA Executive and Economic Development Director. I look forward to working with the county and developing a positive relationship. If you ever have any questions, suggestions, concerns, feel free to stop by my office, give me a phone call, shoot me an email. I also plan to give the board an annual report to try and keep you involved and up to date on what the DDA is doing and how we can work more collaboratively together. If you have any questions, let me know.
Wish you well, hopefully we can fill up some of the stores downtown.
Yep.
Nothing but best wishes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize, we didn't sign in. We can just have a couple moments of your time. We just wanted to recognize Manistee County, all of our local units of government for the award we received for the Park and Recreation Plan. Tamara and I were honored to receive the award at the October Michigan Association of Planning Conference. It was given directly to Manistee County and the Alliance for Economic Success for the completion of the 2016 Park and Recreation Plan under Innovation in Regional Planning.
Congratulations.
That's the one, our trophy case, where does this go?
Trump's house.
It's sitting in my office right now, but I don't remember.
Well, anyway, for both of you and the leadership, you've provided that for everyone in the county. Obviously, you've had a very strong portion in developing that plan, and it's much appreciated. Hopefully, it'll open up doors for us in future funding's efforts, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognizations, announcements, and correspondence, Mr. Kaminski?
I really don't have too much other than to just say we are in the process of complying with the state revenue sharing requirement, which is due December 1st. That's probably something you don't hardly even hear about, but there is at risk a $100,000 of our state revenue sharing if we don't do our job in our office and through Russ's office, where we put a bunch of financial information, a proposed 2017-18 budget, all of our debt schedules, all that stuff. It hasn't actually been emailed to the state yet, we still have until December 1st. We have one small thing to talk to Russ about, that we still need to add to it, but it's ready to go, and it will be provided to them by December 1st. We've had to do this for about three or four years now. It's a real pain for us to do it, but it's one of the governors... It's gotten a little easier over the last couple of years, the governor's loosened some of what he requires from us. We used to have to do it three or four times a year, update it. Now we just provide something once a year, it's on our website. So, I just want you to know that we are doing that, otherwise you would get a letter in the mail sometime next year saying, "Sorry, you're not getting $100,000 out of the $500,000." So, thought I'd let you know that we are doing that.
Is that still under the dashboard program?
That's exactly what we're doing, yes. Right. And then I'm happy to report that we received, and we have to come up with the other half of this money yet, but, and it's really, the other half isn't budgeted, but we did receive from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, a $37,755 grant from them to upgrade our security cameras here in the courthouse and to add some, it's badly needed, our cameras are old, we need to add some in some key places. It's about a $74,000 project, Bruce is out getting bids right now, and we do have a grant into the Revenue Sharing Board for the other half of that. That's yet to be seen whether we get that or not, but we, and we also applied to MLR May for a different kind of a system for fire protection in our computer rooms. For some reason, MLR May didn't think that that was a loss prevention item. I actually sit on the committee that awards those grants, I couldn't vote on this one, but I know the process pretty well, and was just actually appointed to that committee in the last year, so I know that process well, and I think we got kind of an in with that. So, we're gonna be getting $37,000 unless we can't come up with the other half. But I think if we can get half of a $70,000 project, we'll find the money somewhere to complete that project. Also, I don't know if you want to do it right now, but, oh, also, I sent you all an email. As you know, we sold the Jaws truck for $65,000. Oneakama Township's fire chief helped me tremendously, and also Fylly Township helped me a lot with storing the vehicle. We put it on a FireTech website, they took a 10% commission, we sold that vehicle to a fire authority in southern Illinois, they came up, they bought it on a Saturday morning and gave us a check for $65,000, we just paid FireTech 10% of that, $6,500. So, now we have $58,500 on deposit in the Treasurer's Office to give out to other fire agencies around the county to buy heavy lift equipment. I sent an email to the Firefighters Association asking them to give us some recommendations on how to go about that, and I know Mr. Hilliard's also talked to some people in Oneakama about it. They sent me an email yesterday saying, and I forwarded it on to you, you may have not all seen it, they've come up with a process where they've asked all the fire chiefs to come up with their list of where we need this heavy lift equipment and submit them to Jim Espilivik, the Iowa One Director, and he is going to then provide all that information to us. I sent an email back to them saying, "I hope that comes with some price quotes or at least some estimates on money so that we know how to distribute that $58,000," because I know that some of you on the board would like to do that, and some, I don't know if it'll get done that quick, but it would be nice if it could be done yet this year. I think that's... I don't know if you want to do this now, county clerk and I have been talking about the organizational meeting, and I know that both new county commissioners are here, and normally you schedule your organizational meeting at the December board meeting, but since you have board appointments that will be made at the organizational meeting, it was thought, or I thought, and I talked to Jill a little bit about it, that maybe we should try to do that now so that the ad for board appointments can say the meeting is going to take place on January 2nd, January 3rd, whatever it is, at such and such a time. And since both new commissioners are here, they could weigh in on that discussion and schedule that date and time for that meeting. I talked to the chairman before the board meeting, our first business day of the new year is Tuesday, January 3rd, because January 1st falls on a Sunday, so Monday would actually be a holiday, but I believe that Mr. Donz has to be out of town very early on Wednesday, the 3rd, so if we're willing to come in on a holiday, that's when you want to schedule.
I guess it's up to the board, I've got a flight that I've scheduled for a couple of months, 7:20 out of Grand Rapids in the morning on the 3rd, figuring that the 2nd would work, not thinking of the holiday process.
It's not a problem.
I don't, I don't think it'll be, you know, if we can dedicate 45 minutes to an hour on the 2nd, you know, whatever time works easiest, whatever time works for everybody, hopefully, and...
Are they gonna push you for time?
No, I'm fine on the 2nd, but the 3rd, I'm gonna be in Grand Rapids.
The courthouse will be closed on the 2nd, but we can make sure that it's open to the public, either by opening up this door or making sure someone's at the front door letting the public in, letting anyone that doesn't have a key to get in, and then we'll just close it back up when we're done.
I apologize for the scheduling mix-up, I wasn't thinking on those lines.
It's no big deal for us.
2nd works for me. Should we 2nd?
10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, what works best for Tom and Jill, since they're the people who carry it?
Doesn't matter.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
Are new commissioners okay with that date and time?
10 o'clock on the 2nd, thank you.
You should probably make a motion to that, right?
I'll make that. There's a motion for support. Motion and a support for organizational meeting, January 2nd, 10 a.m. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Close opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Alan, you're quiet.
I said aye.
All right, is that it, Tom?
That's all I have.
Okay, so that takes us up to Mr. Paul.
Morning. Morning. I don't have a lot to tell you this morning, I've spent mostly working on getting ready for the auditors to come in. Still don't have a firm idea of where we're gonna end the year, but I have all the expenses and everything booked, just have to do the revenue, set up the accounts receivable. At this point, I'm about just under a half a million dollars in red, which is not unusual. We always have lots and lots of receivables that we set up at the end of the year, and so I anticipate that we will end up in the black, but I can't tell you that for positive yet, but my anticipation is that we will end up in the black. Also, not me, but my staff have been really working hard on printing the tax bills that are due to go out on December 1st. It's always a huge job, and this year even more time-consuming because of all these special assessments. It seems like all of the townships have special assessments for their lake improvement boards and different things, and then with the brownfields and the DDAs and the drain assessments. So, but they've been working really hard, everything is done, everything is printed, folded, stuffed, ready to go, a lot of the townships have already picked up all of their tax bills. We just have a little bit of the city left to fold and stuff, and then everybody will come in and get them and distribute them on before December 1st. Other than that, I know that you saw the, and your packet I think was included, the kettle hole specialist...
One of the big things, based on past histories and experience from our drain commissioner, is to make sure that all of the bills are available. His legal down in Grand Rapids needs to be notified that there will be an audit, and all bills need to be in by this time, if they're not, have a nice day. So, they all have foreword.
All the invoices, all the invoices that have been paid are on file in our office, every single one, so the auditors will have no problem being able to look at that. But they may have questions of the engineer or the attorney based on what they find, so...
Is that requiring a vote, or are we...
I think it's just them guys, you know, saying, "Let's focus on this a little bit, give it just a touch more attention."
And I was one of those boards that know that, because it may be a little more expensive to use audit.
Something's gonna get it, no matter what, so why not just say, "Okay, let's make sure we focus on this one at the moment," and move on. Thank you. I've got my question for you, in the future, if the board, and you go in flying with the land bank, will you need committees, a committee in regard to that, or is that just something that's run on the Treasurer's Office?
Well, the land bank is actually an authority that's set up by statute, the county treasurer is the chair of that authority, and, but no, there will be, you know, probably one, maybe two commissioners that sit on the land bank authority, there will be representatives from the different local units of government, probably someone from the township association, someone from the city, and then communities members at large. I was going to probably have the person who wants to, who was gonna come up and tell you about the land bank come in December, it was suggested that I probably wait until in January when the new commissioners are seated, so that's what I'm gonna shoot for, is that. But yeah, that will be a regular authority that's established, and there will be, you know, a lot of members involved.
That's all I've got, anybody else?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's take this up to a little book, we've got a 10:30 assigned time, so, or 9:30, I'm sorry, we'll go through some committee reports and process. First one up's gonna be Housing Review. They did, the state came in and did a site monitoring visit, obviously that, the committee was held, the meeting on November 17th at 2:30 p.m., and myself and Alan was present. And again, the state went and did a little bit of an audit and a site review, and everything went very well, there was a letter of accommodation for Rachel and also Russ in regard to that, and how well it's been run. Rachel also, Ms. Nelson, indicated that the MEDC will no longer fund it with future grant money, so that program is drying up. And we do have income coming from the program currently, we've got about $35,000, or no, not 35, I take that back. If you have more than $35,000 in a year, you can put it back into the program, or even less than that, you can put it back into different program objectives that are already there, but if it's under 35, you can utilize it for general fund expenditures. So, at the moment, what staff, being Rachel and also Lisa, recommended, there is a program, a computer program that would be useful. So, we made that recommendation, which you can see in the motion, is moved by Marshall, second to Donz, to recommend the purchase of BSNA Human Resource Program, and the amount of money is available, $29,370. If there's a balance remaining, the money will remain in the housing fund, as the motion was carried, so...
I just wanna make a comment, in this letter from the CDG Housing Portfolio Division Manager, in summary, Mansion County's 2014 CDG grant is exemplary. It is efficient and well-paid, made of expenditure for federal funds, are no comments or findings resulting from the monetary review of this grant. Ms. Nelson is commended for excellence in administering this grant. Manistee County and its administrators over the years has applied, have maintained a long history, over 15 years, providing much-needed rehabilitation program for low, moderate-income homeowners. I don't think you get exemplary too often from the federal government, so I think, obviously, this really has done a good job.
It has done, and they do do a good job.
So, I guess the motion would be in order to allocate those funds for the BSNA, if the board so desires.
I just wanna also make a comment, you know, everybody's done a great job on this, but I also feel discouragement that it wasn't used more. It was a great opportunity for people to get some assistance, something that's not really out there that often, and over the years, this program has struggled in many ways, and again, they've done a great job managing it, but, you know, people didn't take advantage of it, and I just kind of love this opinion.
You continued to add restrictions to it.
Yeah, that's just it, that's why the program really started to flutter, is it used to be a grant, it's more so than what it is now, it's more of a very low or no-interest loan.
Well, the federal government, and through the state government, I'm not sure which one's responsible, is you had to earmark funds to certain areas. And we, you know, there's a lot of places in the city of Manistee that are eligible, and there's a lot of places out in Bear Lake and Coopish, some of the rural areas, and the rural areas really had a tough time getting the money because the government put restrictions that had to be walkable communities, had to be downtown area, they wanted that kind of stuff. When this program first started, there were no restrictions like that, it could be anyone in the county, as long as they qualified under the income or whatever the requirements were, they could get the money. Now, we had to set, you know, I think this, the Housing Committee had to set, I can't remember what the word is, but kind of earmark certain areas and let the state know, this is where the areas are, and as a result, someone out in Coopish that maybe was living in a very rural area couldn't get the money where someone in the city of Manistee could. Not to say that the people in these neighborhoods didn't deserve it, and it didn't help them, because it did, but there were a lot of people out in those areas, some of your districts that just weren't eligible.
It's just a point, here in Manistee County, our housing is vulnerable, you know, we have housing issues in terms of affordability, you know, even livability, and any program that comes along, you know, this might not have been a perfect program, but it was a nice program, and, you know, I think we, I think that they did a great job promoting it and trying to get people to enroll in it and working with people as best you can, you know, pulling, you know, meetings together as quickly as we can to get people what they needed, but it's just, it's, you know, I just wish there were so much more, because we definitely need housing in Manistee County, livable, affordable housing.
And there is a lot on the horizon.
Yeah, I know there is, but it's just like...
Tom, they were cutting the funding too.
You know, I'm not exactly sure what's going on with that program now, I think, I think they wanted, they're probably changing the rules again, and we're too small for them, maybe that's what it is, or they're getting cut from the federal level, I'm not exactly sure.
There's also some merging and changing in different grants.
Okay, you probably, the Housing Committee probably knows a lot more about what's actually happening there than I do.
Well, for Manistee County, it's drying up, let's put it that way, that's the best way to leave it.
It's dried up, program, if you will, will still exist for about seven years because they have to keep files on down the road, but as far as any money's available, yes, that won't happen anymore.
At least in the known future.
Well, there is, there is the option, with this monies that come in from payback, gets put in this fund for our organization, to help people if there's money in their fund. So, it won't be like it used to be, but we will have some monies that we could provide assistance, possibly.
But we probably, that money also would probably have to support some sort of order MTE or whatever to manage all those documents and sustain, I would imagine, that's what is...
Yeah, there's no, there's no funding coming for administrative, so, you know, it's just...
It does affect our general fund some, because we're paying Rachel, I think, it used to be 20 hours a month, I think it's five hours a month or something like that now, and nothing in the current budget out of that housing program for administrative costs, we could charge a certain amount. You may also wonder, what's Rachel gonna do now if she doesn't have that, she also has payroll accounts payable, she does a lot of work in the finance area, and Russ and I have some plans, kind of our succession, succession planning is to get her more involved with some things, maybe some of the airport billings, some of the things that Russ is saddled with right now, that maybe even four years from now, a new treasurer might not want to do, we're gonna start giving her more and more of that. That all fits into her accounting degree she's going for, that you've awarded her some money to get, so it's all kind of fitting into place a little bit, and we're gonna be working on giving her more of those duties, so...
And the support for that motion?
Support that.
Okay, motion support for the $29,370 to be used for the BSNA Human Resource Program? Not to exceed, our money's available, so we don't know what the actual total cost is gonna be.
This is something too, that Lisa and Rachel have wanted in their office for years, I'd say three or four years now, they've wanted this Human Resources Program because it makes things just fit so much better together, but every year they ask for it for budget, and I cut it out, because it's kind of last to cut, so this is a good...
But in mind that now we will support it, because, you know, we'll buy it this year, the next year there will be an add-on or there'll be something, so just so we budget going forward.
And there are maintenance kind of, you know...
Right. To keep that going. So, it'll be one of those things.
It'll pay for itself.
Pull back out now, yeah.
Any other questions? Are you good enough to call her home, please?
Mr. Donz?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes. That pretty much concludes the Housing Review Committee's report. We didn't have one, we did it under, we did it under the consent agenda.
Well, there's two items.
Good, well...
The finance report, and then Roger, is here, I don't know how long he wants to stay here.
Well, 9:30, we'll go to, we'll catch that after the 9:30. Yes. All in favor of the Tuesday, November 17th Housing Review Committee report? And it's...
I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
How was that, the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You actually might want to go to something else, because I don't think your 9:30 appointment is here yet.
He's in Florida, he'll be here soon to get the...
All right. They go off that then, and we will move on to the finance report.
Okay. Starts at 20, the summary's on page 20, the Ways and Means Committee, I know that the four years I've been on here, I've always been Ways and Means Committee, meeting every month, this is the first time, I don't know how often that's happened.
Never yet.
Never yet, so we really did not have much on the agenda in November, so we did not have a meeting, and we did not review and approve the finance report. So, on page 20, you have the summary of the financials, bills, and also two payrolls. And then following that is the detailed expenditures for each one, usually we spend a fair amount of time in the Ways and Means Committee reviewing all those expenditures, so I don't know if you looked through all those, but that is about, you know, 10 or 12 pages of detail following this summary. And so, at this point, I'll move to approve the on-demand checks, bills, and payroll being accepted, an amount of $1,167,083.41, and that the same be placed on file.
The motion's support for paying the bills. Any further discussion? Okay, Kurt Begood, please.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilliard?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
There is another item that did not come up because we didn't have a meeting last month, but this is rather an urgent request, I believe. It's an amendment to, Roger Elbers, his equalization director, is asking for amendment to the resolution of 2016-27 because of the additional millage being approved by Mason County Eastern Schools. And Roger, do you want to bring us up to date on that?
Yes. As you recall, in October, you adopted the apportionment report, and I mentioned at that time that you have to adopt it in October, but you can still amend it later. And we did have an election on the, on the eighth, and Mason County Eastern did approve 2.25 mils of debt. And so I'm asking you to amend the apportionment report, and so everything is exactly the same, except that when you look at the column for Mason County Eastern under Stronach Township, those numbers are a little bit different. 2.5 mil, 2.25 mil, sorry.
And I think there's a resolution in our package.
It's 2016-27.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on page thirty-two, it says.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the amended resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, motion support for Resolution 2016-27. Any further discussion on that resolution?
The only thing is, I guess, there is, Mason County Eastern stands up in Manastee County, so we...
Yes, we have a very small area by the landfill that is in Mason County.
No further comment, Kurt Begood, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hilliard?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
That would conclude the Ways and Means Committee report. Okay. We need to...
There's no minutes, is it?
Do you want to just approve the...
There's no minutes. All right, personnel committee. Kevin, you're up.
Thank you. Personnel met Wednesday, November ninth. Three were present on line requiring board action with a short-term disability carrier change. Lisa Segala presented the committee with rates for current and new short-term disability carriers. This indicated that the county has not been happy with Lincoln Financial, the current carrier, due to slower response times and other issues regarding claims. Lisa presented the committee with a chart showing rates for three other carriers, Madison National Life, Kansas City Life, and Yerba National. Mr. Segala recommended going to Madison National Life. This policy would include life, short-term disability, and Employee Assistance Program. The Employee Assistance Program includes up to six free visits per employee of council visits. It was moved by Mr. Bergstrom and seconded by Mr. Dunn to recommend that effective January first, 2017, to change to Madison National Life as the carrier for short-term disability. And I'll accept that motion.
Support it. Motion support. Any further discussion?
I was curious, one thing for Lisa, the disability itself within the building, if you will, that's actually, or has that actually gone down since you have the Call Doctor and other programs that we have available?
That's not, that's not related to that. This is if, this is saying someone slips and falls on the ice and has to be on work for five weeks because, you know, they, they can't be up or be on their life.
Okay.
It covers seventy percent of their wage, so that's different than the Call Doctor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Kurt Begood, not to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilliard?
Yes.
We discussed Health Saving Account Insurance Plan. This is something that wouldn't take effect until October of 2017, so we just kind of discussed it, and no action was really taken. Other than that, that was about it for our personnel, and I'll make a motion to accept the Finance Report.
No, sir. Motion support to accept the Personnel Committee report. Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Judge Brunner, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes before you today. I'm Tom Brunner, District Court Judge, and we're here asking for your assistance on a district court matter. The statute in question authorizes the judges of district court to appoint magistrates. And the same statute also requires approval of the magistrate by the County Board of Commissioners. So that's, that's why I'm here at this time. The intention of the district court is to appoint Jared Henry and also Clayton Kelly as magistrates for district court contingent upon your approval. And I do have Mr. Henry and Mr. Kelly here. If they would just stand up and say hello, this is Mr. Henry on this side, and this is Mr. Kelly right here. And Tony is retiring effective November thirtieth, and that's going to be a big loss to me in our district court. She has a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience. She has actually served fifty-one years, so she must have started when she's nine or thereabouts. I'm not sure, but Tony's been just incredibly helpful to me, and she's done an outstanding job as court administrator and magistrate. Out of her fifty-one years, she's been magistrate for thirty-four. So I would greatly appreciate when you see her to thank her for her kind and wise service that she's given us all. In regard to that background, I have met at length with Judge Thompson, and we have received numerous resumes. We've conducted numerous interviews, and it is our choice to hire attorney Jared Henry to be our magistrate court administrator going forward. And Jared is a practicing attorney. He's been practicing a little over a year with the firm of Krolcheck and Quinn, and he's, he's done a remarkable job in any time he's been in front of me. He's been in front of me in district court, in front of me in probate court, also in front of me in family division of circuit court. And he's done just a super job, and he was interested in the position, and that is who we would like to hire. He had terrific grades in law school, graduated from Detroit Mercy, and even as an added bonus to us, he is a local person that's come home. He grew up here, and so that's pretty cool to have one of us come back here to serve his community. And so that's, that's how Jared Henry comes into the mix. Clayton Kelly, he's already on the staff in, in circuit court. He is a research attorney for Judge Thompson. He is a family court referee. His assistance for us as a magistrate appointment is simply for emergency purposes. He's still in his same role as research attorney, he's for Judge Thompson. He's still in his same role as referee on some family court matters. So this is just his assistance as magistrate solely for emergency purposes, and so that's, that's where that's coming from. Clayton is quite talented as well. He's been in his current position about two years, law clerk and referee. He's done a great job. He did very well in his class, class rank at Cooley Law School, and once again, can you believe it, this is a local boy that's come home. And so I think that's really outstanding, that they're back here and wishing to work for us. That's, that's why I'm here and who we'd like to select for these, these positions. So it is our intention to appoint Jared Henry and Clayton Kelly as magistrates for the Eighty-Fifth District Court in Manastee County. And I recommend to you, from my position, that you approve their appointment. I think it's a great choice for our county, and thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd try to answer them.
Well, I appreciate your credence for, for the two individuals, and I surely support your decisions.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Clayton Kelly as the Eighty-Fifth District Court backup magistrate, and Jared Henry as the Eighty-Fifth District Court magistrate court administrator. I'll second that.
Motion and support for Resolution 2016-29. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Kurt Begood, not to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilliard?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Business falls.
All right, I guess let's, let's get into green team, and then we can maybe take a quick recess after the board has so declined.
Green team, Matt. First time in, in a couple months, we had quite a few documents to go over relative to what garbage had been collected over the past couple months. Sir Archer was quick to say that as usual, the recycling program is starting to wind down for the summer months. We're starting to look at pulling some containers from some of the sites. The only piece of business that was conducted by the green team at that meeting was the consensus for us to join the recycling coalition. That was, there's a, it's a membership which has ten, two hundred, two hundred dollar a year cost, but it provides us with resources and availability to programs and stuff that we might not have the option to go to if we didn't belong to the coalition. So it was unanimous within the green team committee that we joined that organization. And that's about the end of the green team.
Yes, we don't need to take any action.
Anything new on recycling operation in the county?
Uh, that is moving forward. It's referred to as a three-R program, I believe, and that is moving forward. The grant has been divided, and the organization is starting to be, moving separate.
See, the program goes in stages, that grant, and the first part of that grant or program is to go is to get all the townships and cities and villages in the region all on board. And actually, we're getting them on board with, for each township or village, there's actually no cost, there'll be some data that will have to be provided, but as far as the cost for them to even get on board so we have a solid program started, we're in the final stages of getting everyone together.
You say region, you mean more than county, more than one counties?
Benzing.
Benzing.
It's going as far as Travis City and Lelandville.
Right, right.
It's expanding considerably in the heat, and the reason is, is everybody's looking for a method to make recycling sustainable in the region. It's been pretty well proven that individual organizations, townships, counties, cities can't do it on their own. But in a county of scale, the more people you get involved in the, in the recycling program, the more doable it becomes. So with this program that's being brought on board, we're looking at Lelandville, Travis City, Travis City, Benzing County, all along this part of the Michigan area.
Would be one facility then? I don't know what facility.
That's still, that's still to be determined, but we're in the very ground, very, very ground floor of that program.
If you've heard of the Emmett County process, that took twenty years to get that process. Now, it's been there for a few years, but to get to that point, you have to start out with what kind of data do you have in the region in the first place? And that's what the first stage of this grant program, being, being available, that's the first stage of it.
Okay, can it determine the critical mass and choose a profitable business?
Well, the motion would be in order.
I got a question for you. I understand this is under five hundred dollars, so we don't have to mess with it. I think for the record, we should put in that just four degrees of joining this membership, so we shouldn't have to take a vote on it. It's up to you guys.
It's not a broad, if you want to, I mean, makes, puts it on the record in the minutes.
Yeah, I think that might be better. I understand it's with five hundred dollars.
Well, it was, it was brought up about, about the vote, and basically, it's the same thing as memberships, that we pay for, you know, so there was no vote necessary.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. I'm not seeing consensus on it, so let's move forward then. Let's take a, let's take a motion to accept the green team committee report of November seventeenth.
I'll make that motion.
Motion support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, you like a ten minute? Let's do a ten minute, we'll reconvene at ten oh five. Please watch it. Your clerk watches whatever you have.
I'm looking forward to hearing your...
And we're ready to go. We're going to go to the ten o'clock.
Work out again?
Yeah, you can blow. Talk fast, you guys, battery's getting low.
You're supposed to come fully charged.
Yeah, I charge them, I got it.
You want to plug in? Or you want to plug in?
No. I rarely, I know it's coming up anyway.
Well, I guess let's start. Back in the session, Mr. Daniels, sir, you're up for our ten o'clock.
You know, Mark's on the area, he's counsel northwest. He would probably want to hear all this.
And I would be happy to listen to your reporters.
Well, he's going to be walking in, I think, probably, wouldn't he?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Any second.
Blaming on Brooke. You're it, Brooke, yep.
That's what happens. I've sat there for two months, I've got so much built up, it'd be I can talk fast.
Just so you know, everyone that's sitting here, the reason I was laying, I was at the Barrow Lake School. My granddaughter got a letter of, an award of excellence.
A hundred percent on a state test?
Yeah. 1357 on the state third grade test, she got 1357. But she really wasn't as good at math, she told me. She only got 1347.
All right, Mr. Daniels, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Commissioners-to-be. Thank you very much for having me here today. I'm gonna start out with, there's an old Chinese saying that goes something, it's a warning about living during interesting times. Well, for the Council on Aging, for the city, and for the county, these are very interesting times. We're going to be having a lot going on with the Council on Aging over the next few months. As you probably saw in the paper, on television, and it was in your meeting package, the Council on Aging in conjunction with the Alliance for Economic Success, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the State of Michigan Aging and Adult Services Agency, the Northwest Michigan Area Agency on Aging, and 16 other organizations, I'm making up numbers, but are going to be creating what we're calling a senior village on the north side of Manistee. With the developer, which is Third Coast Development from Grand Rapids, we are entering into an agreement to purchase the Olsen's property, the entire property, not just the store. The store, the parking lots, and the two existing outbuild leaves that are there, where there's a Dollar Store and a secondhand shop back there. And we will be creating a, again, a senior village that will tie from the highway bridge to the Maple Street Bridge, the entire length of Memorial Drive on the north side there. The first phase of this will be the conversion of the Olsen's building into two, the building will stay intact in one building, but there will be a wall at about a 60/40 split. The Council on Aging will be taking the 60%, which will be the west half of the building, and will be converting that into the new senior center. It will include much more space. We have a little over 4,000 square feet now. We'll have approximately 20,000 square feet in there. We'll be updating the kitchen. A part of the large storage areas, the warehouses, will become two indoor pickleball courts. Those will tie into a large meeting area, so when we have our really big events, we can have them all back at the senior center. Now, when we have dances and things like that, we get 200, 250 people at some of these events. We'll be able to fit them all in there. We'll have adequate meeting rooms and rooms for the various clinics like hearing aid and eyeglass and foot clinics and all those things that we have. Not individual rooms, but rooms, one room that can do all of this stuff. We'll have a board rooms. We actually now meet at the Dialorite Building because we don't have any place in the senior center to have our board meetings. But that room will also serve as a computer center. And it's going to be a tremendous use of that facility. The other half, the 15,000 square feet, will be a small retail grocery store. I cannot give you the name yet, but you'll know it when you hear it. That they are signed on and will be in there. So we will be returning some grocery shopping to the city on the north side. That will all be happening, we're hoping, in the first half of 2017. We're hoping to have all of this in place by early, well, mid-2017, June, July, that timeframe. The reason I'm here today is we are applying for a loan from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to make this happen. It's a very low interest loan. It's amortized over 40 years. And part of the loan application process asks that we get letters of support or motions of support from various political entities that would be potentially involved in this. So we are asking you for a motion of support, the city, the Little River Band, the Northwest Michigan Area Agency on Aging, and the State Office of Adult and Aging and Adult Services, I can never remember their new name. It used to be the Office of Services to the Aging. Everyone has agreed to do that and will be providing support letters for us. Everyone is behind this concept. It is the way to go in creating kind of a village within a city or a village within a township or whatever, where everything is focused on senior services. There's more of this that I'm gonna talk to in a minute, which will address something you guys were discussing earlier this morning. But I should say right up front that this motion of support is, is a moral support, not a financial support. We're not here asking you for money, at least not yet. No, okay. But.
Where did that be from?
I was already there and knew it. All we are asking for at this time is that this motion, and there was a draft in your package that AES and I put together, that you're on board with this, you agree with it, you support the concept of it, not financially, but you're in agreement with what we're trying to do here. There again, there's no financial tie to that. The way the finances will work on this is the Council on Aging will be buying the entire Olsen's grocery store building as it exists now and renting the 15,000 square feet to the retail customer. We have a 10-year lease that's been agreed to, a lease amount that's set up. That lease amount will cover the mortgage payments on the entire building because of low interest rate and the 40-year amortization. So it's basically, depending upon exactly where the U.S. Department of Agriculture interest rate comes in, we will either have to supplement that minimally, or we will have to, we will have a little positive cash flow from it, money, extra money to go to our programs. In order to get some money down on this, we have actually been saving for the 45 or so years that the Council on Aging has been in existence. We have a very substantial pile of money that we're going to put into it. We own our building outright. We'll be listing that for sale very shortly, and we'll be selling that. And that money will all go in towards a down payment on it. We're going to be having a capital campaign starting very shortly. And everything we can raise from the capital campaign will go to reducing the loan amount, which will then lead to that positive cash flow. So this is actually adding to our operating funds. Our goal is absolutely to use none of the millage money to make this deal happen. That we will, the millage money will continue to go for our programs, for our staff, for making the things happen that we deliver, not into the building. And I want to make that perfectly, totally clear. We're not gonna be touching the millage money on this. We believe we could, we just don't wanna do that. We wanna keep that money going towards delivering services to the people in Manistee County. Now, the next phase of this, and it ties into your discussion earlier, the developer is going to be putting up in conjunction with Michigan Housing Development Administration, a approximately 45 to 50-unit apartment building that will be right along Memorial Drive. It will be four-story, it will be seniors, it will be partially subsidized, partially market rate rent, one and two-bedroom apartments. The first floor will be small retail space in there on the half facing the river. The back half will be covered parking for the residents of the parking structure. And so you can see, if we're gonna be moving 48 people who are over 60 from their houses, that's gonna be opening up approximately 48, in most cases, lower-end housing units in the Manistee County area. So as you were talking about the lack of housing, the availability of housing here, if this works, there is space on the property to put two more of those buildings up so we could conceivably have 140 or 150 apartments like this before this is all done. Only one is going to be built at this point. But if that goes like all was expected to go, there will in likelihood be two additional units put on. So when you have all of that tied into the Dialorite right next door, the farmer's market across the street, and all of that, two easy walking blocks from downtown Manistee, you have really created a senior village. Now, we also have in that retail space, it's going to be available verbal commitments to put a pharmacy and a walk-in clinic in there. So you have housing, you have medical care, you have grocery shopping, you have transportation, you have a farmer's market, and you have a senior center within that area between the bridges on the north side. And that's what we're asking you to support. That's the dream. Ninety-plus percent of that is in place. We've met with USDA, they're very, very positive about, I mean, they're not saying we're going to get it, they are very, very up on our ability. This is exactly what the rural development program is for. And they really believe that this is exactly the type of thing that they would be happy to support.
What is the ultimate number of units again in housing?
The first building will have approximately 48. And that depends upon how many one and two bedrooms, and they're still working that out they're going to have. But then there's room on the property for two additional buildings. That where those two stores are now, for instance, they could be taken out and one put there, and then one back and the far, what would that be, Northwest Market?
So there's no real goal in terms of number of units beyond that? It's just gonna be the demand?
Exactly, exactly.
Is that being financed by rural development too?
No, that will be through Michigan.
From Michigan?
The developer is working with Michigan on that. They will be putting that application in in March. Michigan only takes applications, or in April, in October and April, so they're gonna be putting that application in April. And while they anticipate, they haven't been rejected on any other projects they've gone into, they've done a number of these around the state. Presuming that it's approved, that construction would start in the fall of 2017.
Does Michigan require that you do some survey in terms of demand or anything like that?
Yes, they will be doing that as part of theirs. They've done an informal analysis on themselves before they even started putting any money into it to agree and determine that yes, there's a significant need for housing.
All right, and then we got a 10-year lease on the grocery store?
That's correct.
What happens if they say, I'm not selling off sales, we're backing out five years down the road or something? What are the sanctions? Are there any sanctions or anything?
Not after the 10 years, it will be a commercial rental agreement.
But then after three or four, they say this is not where?
If they go out after three or four, we have a lease that says they don't pay the settlement for 10 years.
Still for 10 years?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they have competed successfully in multiple locations in northern Michigan with all of the other big retailers around. They compete successfully with Spark and stores on Meyer.
Where's the point?
So, and plus that they have two five-year options after. But the thing is, we, we will own the entire building. At the interest rate, we could get it through Department of Agriculture. It didn't make much sense to condoize it if we buy half and they buy half. They really didn't wanna buy. For tax reasons, it's better for them to rent than it is to buy a building. But they have a stellar reputation. You will know it immediately. The family that runs it is well-known in northern Michigan.
Vicious project, or something, a great project?
Well, thank you, it is vicious. It's been a lot of work and there's a lot left to go, but the pieces just started falling into place. You know, we tried through the armory and decided we just couldn't afford the operating cost of that place. And we looked at literally every other building in the immediate greater Manistee area that might possibly be big enough, and either they were too small, or they were two-story buildings or places, but then the clientele we're dealing with aren't gonna deal with steps and elevators, they're really expensive. We just looked at everything possible and then knowing that one of these days the Olsen's store might become available. And when it did, literally, I read in the paper, picked up the phone, Molsins Incorporated Traverse City.
Did you say that the lease payments of the store, the grocery store, would be sufficient to pay the debt payments?
Yes, that's to cover the mortgage, yes. When you take the low interest rates and amortize it over 40 years, those monthly payments, I mean, they're still substantial, we're talking a lot of money here, but they're gonna be paying a substantial amount of rent for that space. And it'll all depend on exactly where that interest rate and a half a percentage variance in that interest rate can either mean where we're making a few thousand dollars a year or we have to come up with a few thousand dollars a year. Hence the capital campaign, that will be able to reduce that debt amount down to wherever that interest rate comes in, we'll end up with a positive cash flow out of it. And we have very good indications, I'll call it, on the capital campaign being successful. We've had some initial feelers out in that area.
That's the DDA too, isn't it, or not in the DDA?
AES.
It is in the DDA.
Oh, is it in the DDA? I believe it is. I believe that part of the north side is still.
Tyler probably will be involved in that too.
We will certainly be happy to have him involved, I mean, anytime he wants to get in on it.
Yeah, there'd be some great opportunities for Washington Street.
Yeah, we're not doing this in a vacuum at all. We haven't been talking about it because we wanted to get, as you can see, there's a lot of moving pieces in this, a lot of people having to agree. Now, everyone has written agreements in place except the one that I talked about, the verbal, which is the medical portion, but we have very strong belief that that will actually happen. You know, no one's signed on the bottom dotted line yet, but everyone has signed on to this and is putting money into it and is, and is working hard on it. So I have every belief that this will be happening over the next, what, 12, 18 months or so.
For some advantages to be in the DDA too. Tom gets pretty uptight. I mentioned it. It's lost tax dollars right now.
Oh, you told Tyler, Mike.
I got a question there. You say you have a lease for 10 years, but you have a loan for 40. What happens if the lease does not give you 10 years? Do you have a contingency plan to cover the other 30 years?
Well, the contingency plan will be two phases. One, that over the next 10 years, we'll be bringing money aside from the lease money coming in. Again, we're anticipating a very successful capital campaign that will allow us to reduce those loan payments, that we will then be putting that money aside. As the landlord, we will still be responsible for, if the H-rack goes up or something like that. So we have to have money for that. And we believe we have to have, you know, six to 12 months' worth of money available in order to, to cover that period if the tenant moves out. They haven't backed out of any place yet that I'm aware of where they've gone into a deal like this and leased a building. They've kept on going. They're a small square footage, nice, I've been in a couple of their stores, they're nicely laid out, extremely walkable. Again, it's only gonna be half the size of the former Olsen's store, so less than half the size. It won't have all the glitz and all of the, it won't have a bakery, and it won't have the fresh food or the prepared foods and all of that, but it will have, believe me, anything you would want in a normal grocery store. And I believe the people on our side will be very happy with it when it opens up.
And it sounds like the future phase two or three has additional retail that will be available.
Yes, there will be other retail space available down there. I don't have a crystal ball, Ken. I don't, I can't see what's gonna happen in 10 years. Like I say, they already have two five-year options.
I'm just wondering, because for some reason, if they don't renew their lease, do you have the funds available to pick up the other 30 years to pay the mortgage? Or is there gonna be add-on to the millage, or you have to dip into the millage to go to whatever?
Well, as of right now, the money that we have available now will be going into the down payment on the building. The capital campaign will then provide money that will help reduce those payments so that we will then be making money every month and putting money aside from what we take in in the rent every month to hold in a contingency fund for that happening. So we'll have 120 months' worth of rent that we can, we can put aside in the event that they shouldn't pull out.
It sounds like you, you know, you have cash, it's fluid. It sounds like you're gonna stay that way, doing it how you're doing it, so that in case if it does happen, you'll have that reserve.
We would certainly hope. I will be long retired from the Council on Aging Board by that point, but.
I got a question for you. I assume that you've already did a title search on the property. The reason I'm asking, there are no deed restrictions on that building, are there?
Not that we know of. The developer will be buying the building and then selling it to us. They are buying the property outright from Olsen's. And then we'll be working with the city, there's some rezoning, there's a street abandonment that has to happen. That's all gonna be done by the developer while the construction is going on. They've met with the city with Denise, and it's, everything is all set as to what's going to happen.
Do you know they plan on enclosures on Memorial Drive? You said abandonment, street abandonment?
No.
No, but I.
I've asked the city manager to repay it though.
Yeah, but I, you know, I, I think that along the way, the city will have to look at, you know, better crosswalks and stuff like that.
Absolutely, with the farmer's market across the street, with the park that's over there now, and with some long-range plans for that park. I mean, it's, it's, the location is perfect, but we'll just have to work a little bit on that crossing. The street abandonment is, what would it be, to the east, to the south of those two buildings over there in the corner? It's just paved like a parking lot now, but under that parking lot is a street right away. With them, the city, the city bench doesn't believe we'll have any trouble. Just, you know, it's been used as a parking lot for decades. I mean, I think that's been paved over since the 80s or thereabouts.
Which guy have the two little buildings in there?
They will, in all likelihood, be torn down if a, if another, that was a planned second unit would go if it's ever built. If not, the developer is keeping those and will be getting the rent from them, Olsen's gets rent from them now, they'll be buying that as part of their purchase of the property. What we will be buying is a completely finished turnkey senior center for us with a tenant all set up in place in the grocery store half of it. The grocery store will be doing their own modifications at their half of the building.
So you can get the rents from those two auxiliary buildings?
No, no, the developer is retaining those.
I've got a couple of things. I like the positive direction. I've sat on that board, so I know all the board members, and I trust their direction. The two new board members, I've been on boards, other boards with them, so I trust that direction. I will support this wholeheartedly. Something else, I think it's important to understand that the city manager, if you will, is already onboard. And something else, in our strategic plan with the Council on Aging three years ago, the first one ever, which the county has adopted or approved the wording, if you will, it talks about, the Council on Aging has to expand. And I think this direction all fits in with the strategic plan, which is on record. And I commend you, and I commend the executive director, Sarah Howard Olsen. So I'm good with this and. which the county has adopted or approved, the wording, if you will, it talks about, the Council on Aging has to expand. And I think this direction all fits in with the strategic plan, which is on record. And I commend you, and I commend the executive director, Sarah Howard Olsen. So I'm good with this, and I don't know if right now is the time, but I would make a motion to approve Resolution 216-28.
Motion and support for Resolution 2016-28, letter of support for the Council on Aging and bringing the new development.
I have one more question, just comment, I guess. A building, you're going to, 40 units, I think, 40 of the real units?
Brown, between 45 and 50, depending upon how many are one-bedroom and how many are two-built.
Well, that's a built-in market right there for the grocery store, too. The more you build, the better, too, I guess, but the guy who's great.
If you feel a snack, you can go downstairs.
You know why I asked about the deed restrictions, right?
No, I don't.
Okay, Dutch Stores, which is going on all over the state now, Myers has probably got it. They put deed restrictions on the properties. For example, Olsen's is out. They may have a deed restriction that says you cannot move a food-selling business on that property.
I know that is not the case, or.
Okay, just check it out. I don't think Olsen's is big enough, like Myers, Walmart, they all do it. That's the only reason I asked that question.
I certainly can understand that, but actually, I better not get into that.
No, don't get into it. Just checked it out.
Yeah, but now, we, Olsen, the Olsen Corporation owns it outright, and we've had that discussion with them, and there's nothing in that. I don't know about anything in the deeds because, but, you know, there's certainly nothing in the sales agreement between the developer and Olsen's. And again, we will only come in after the project is all built.
That's fine.
And I should have added on the housing project, the top store is going to be a deck because of its height. You'll have views of Manistee Lake and Lake Michigan from the top of that four-story building, so.
Are you going to do any supportive, you know, like the supported living programs in your complex, or, you know?
It will be a large percentage subsidized housing and a small percentage full-market housing. With the Misha program that they're looking at, it is very generous. You can have something on the order of 20, 21,000 and incoming about 100 grand in the bank. Don't quote me on those numbers, but it's in that area, enough that your average retiree around here, with their pensions and the like, would fit in under the subsidized program, and the selling of their house, most of which will be going for under 100,000 bucks, would allow them to keep the money from the sale of their houses and asset.
And will you, do you see yourself bringing in healthcare and all these different elements? I don't know if the hospital would bring in physical therapy or even a pharmacist to take labs and stuff. I don't know what you've got planned, but will you also allow, like, assisted assistance to go on in, or have you thought about that, too? Just general assistance in their home?
This building will strictly be apartments, no sort of assisted living out. Could somebody on their own have a support company come in and help with the housekeeping, or help with cooking, or bathing, or whatever? Absolutely, there would be no restrictions on what you do in your own apartment. We have talked generally in the future buildings, maybe one of those or a portion becomes a step program. It actually becomes a couple floors of assisted living or something like that. But that's down the road. That's not any part of what we're discussing right now.
Green Acres, where I'm at, they're building in the backyard now, but they're adding on, and they have a complex, too, that they're in their development. We got the design in the mail for all the residents, but it looks like condos and stuff like that, too. But I just kind of wondered, and I keep wondering, because as you know statistically, if you read the statistics, we have had a population of growing adults and seniors in our community. And so this is, I think, a wonderful, fabulous idea, and, you know, I'm glad to see all this going on.
Well, thank you. We don't have hard numbers because the census bases, their numbers on age 62 are from, based upon the 2010 census, approximately, give or take, 34% of Manistee County is now 60 and over, and growing.
So is Misha's focus on who's going to be renting those units? Low-income people, or retired people, or combination, or what are they, how are they looking at that? What do they expect to happen?
This project is 60-plus.
60-plus.
And I believe handicap, but for sure 60-plus. I'm not 100% sure on if handicap can also get in on the same programs.
But it won't address low income?
It won't be low income. It will be 60-plus with, depending upon their income level, a potential for some subsidized support.
Okay, we've got a motion and support for Resolution 2016-28. No further questions. Call rules, please.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mr. Burksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Daz?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Do you need one more support?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your questions.
We will keep you informed, and then we'll certainly be a big open house, but I will be back to you as this progresses, just to give you reports on what's happening.
Just a point of interest, how available I make myself, Bob gave me a call when I was in my deer blind opening morning. I answered the phone.
You are dedicated.
Thank you. 10:30, we're close on track. Ms. Berkey, you're up, MSU Extension.
Thank you for having me today. Again, I'm just here, I know it was included in your packet, and there was a summary in the agenda. I'm here today to present the 2017 Annual Agreement for MSU Extension Services. The agreement follows the annual budgeting process that has recently concluded and just outlines the continued commitments between both parties, MSU Extension and Manistee County. Again, the agreement just continues the investment of our educational programming and services in Manistee County for the residents. We're continuing to be proud of our impacts, and I was excited to be here earlier to talk about those. A few months ago, we reached over 2,731 residents, and we continue to keep our costs low and manage our resources wisely. We're excited to have increased commitment and impacts here in Manistee County coming up into the new year. We received a grant to have a staff person that's dedicated to improving school lunchroom and to increasing the availability and access of healthy foods for our youth. And she's already signed on multiple Manistee schools to form some wellness committees, as well as to work with the school lunchroom to improve those lunchroom experiences. So again, just one example of continued impacts and commitment to Manistee County. So I'm here today to present that agreement. I have copies if you need them, or were they all in your?
They're in our package.
Okay.
I have a question, and I guess maybe to you, Tom, is it looks like there's a pretty extensive technology requirement in there in terms of access to the internet and various programs and things like that. I don't know if you read through that whole part, but there's a section that requires, I've never seen that in the past, but maybe that's always been there.
That's, and that's why, I mean, it's a great question. I didn't mean to jump in, Tom, is that okay if I answered, or would you like to?
Go ahead, because I probably can.
Okay. It's the same, it's the same technology that we've been asking for in the last five years. The old agreement had that listed separately, and so we bundled it all in one agreement so that people don't say, where's that appendix B? And it wasn't included in our last year's agreement as far as that separate appendix. It was bundled into this year's agreement to address that very question. We, right now, the technology that we have that is provided to us meets this criteria.
I think, I think, Mark, what you might be referring to is last month, we had some discussion about, I think, some connection, wireless connection between our building and the MSU Extension building. And we had some issues, and I think we spent a couple thousand dollars trying to address that. And I think that's probably where your question is somewhat coming from. But I think we're addressing that. Gordon's addressing that.
That was, is Gordon, I'm trying to, so has he reviewed it, has he addressed it?
Yeah, you approved some things last month.
Yeah, and proved the Wi-Fi capability, broadband.
If there was a tree in the way, sometimes our phones and our internet would drop. And so we met with Gordon, he was gracious as well. You know, you were very helpful as well, Lisa, to help us kind of say, what do we need to do to improve this? And he came up with a great plan for us, and he did email me and indicate that that's going to be installed in the next month or so. And we agreed that we would be completely available and to support whatever he does, so, yes.
The only other question I really had was, and I think Gordon was researching this, too, the security of our system.
I can, I don't know that answer, but I can tell you that whenever you talk to Gordon, security is one of his top priorities. So I'm sure he's addressing that, if there's any issue whatsoever.
I'll make a motion to, I'm just going to make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll save it.
Motion and support. Now, any questions?
Yeah, I would just want to thank the gentleman Berkeley, and the MSU Extension, you talk about child development and healthcare and 4-H and natural resources and all the things that come with it. I really appreciate it. I want to identify specifically the training that's provided through the MSU Extension. For 11 years, I've been a master citizen planner, and I've been able to keep my certifications up every year through different classes. And so I appreciate that, and I've found that that information I've got from the master citizen program itself has been valuable at the city council level and even here at the county level. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for your leadership also.
I have one question. This is the same agreement we've had the last couple of years, right? Because we cut back on some of those services that, remember, a couple of years.
In the past, Jennifer, maybe you can explain this better than I can, but in the past, we had a budget for MSU Extension. We paid for the rent, we paid for all the office supplies, all the travel, a portion of them, I think, the 4-H salary, the secretary. And it was just a budget. Several years ago, MSU Extension did a bunch of, you know, MSU, the university looked at the extension and did a whole overhaul of it. And it didn't come without a lot of controversy, but there was a proposal to set a fee based on some formula that we would all pay based on the size of our community and everything. And for that fee, we would get certain services, and then things like travel and some of the other costs would be a part of that fee. We still pay some things, like if there was rent, we would pay rent, I believe, if there was. And I think we pay some office supplies, but all the travel that was done previously by the extension directors and by others is all now submitted to MSU Extension. So we're paying basically the same, less the rent, because we moved them out of a facility we were paying about $17,000 for. We moved them into one of our buildings in Manistee. But it comes out, it all came out pretty close to the same amount of money, but we don't have some of the unknown costs. We pay an assessment fee to them, and that's it.
I remember there was a long list of things they provided, and we had to cut some of them off to bring it down to where we could afford it.
Jennifer, I don't know.
That's the same thing we're getting right now.
The agreement is, as far as the tenants of the agreement are identical to what you've had previously. It looks a little different just because we made some structural changes to address some of the frequently asked questions that boards would come back and ask us to make sure it was more inclusive and didn't have those lingering doubts.
We're really doing this a little bit backwards because, as Jennifer mentioned, the budget has already been approved for the 41, for the entire budget. And now we're approving the agreement. If you said no to the agreement today, I guess, well, MSU Extension would have to move out.
We're saving, sir.
Their visa's.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
You'd probably have a roof still with 4-H people next month, but other than that.
With their animals.
No animals, just a lot of kids.
I do have a question for you, Jennifer.
Yes.
One of the services is economic development. Can you elaborate on what you're doing in that?
Well, for MSU Extension regarding economic development, I do know that we do a lot of, we don't really have like a formal EDC kind of service that we do. We do a lot of structure and board support for economic growth. So we try to work with local units, EDCs, to help them through some strategic planning process to look at what the critical issues are. We do a lot of work setting up communities so that they are more inviting for economic development, such as placemaking. We received that large state grant for the last few years to do placemaking within communities to create an environment where businesses want to come. So it's like, what is it about your community that attracts those businesses and subsequently those workers so that the businesses come? It's natural resource growth, it's high internet connectivity, it's maybe your beautiful water and in the lakes. So what is it about that community that you can restructure so that the employees come, so that the businesses come and follow as well? And I know placemaking was something that was done with the city of Manistee as well to bring that sense of place. And so those are the economic pieces that we bring to the table. A lot of structure and education around best practices to form that more attractive area for businesses to come and thrive.
Do you do any studies, too, or is that something you could do, studies?
We are always looking to partner, and I can tell you, my campus partners always want to come to my district, partly because a large majority of it is water-bound and has a lot of nice, attractive kind of tie onto weekends. But we always do have, I guess you'd say, professors and other folks that do research on campus wanting to investigate, what is it about communities that would maybe bring people there? I know we've had partnerships with a lot of professors to do research on healthcare and health needs, as well as youth development. So the sky's the limit, and we have someone that I know that forms those linkages between university and the field, if you will, or the counties.
I think it's important to understand that the MSU Extension collaborates with A E S is toward the tail end of the SE, the SEP program, Strong Economics Together program. Actually, Jeff and I are on the same committee. They're actually talking about energy in the region, if you will. There's housing studies in there, and talk about energy, talk about natural resources. And that's in conjunction with the A E S, so that's a program also where they share services.
You do work with regional prosperity and that, right?
Yes, works very key into that, yes. We try to be good partners. We try to add value to what our partners do. We try to sit at the table and say, what is it that our role and scope can be to make this project better, more expansive, or truly link the research that's on campus to our communities?
There's a motion and support. Further questions?
Mr. Burksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Daz?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Shaker?
Thank you.
Yep, and thank you, and I, again, just a reminder, I know I sent out an email and a letter for the new county commissioner training that's going to be next month. And so if you'd like a refresh, you're welcome to come. I do know the new commissioners received it as well. But if I can give any other assistance, please don't hesitate to call.
We had both of our new members here, but I think it's here, but.
Yeah, oh, she's, she's right there.
Well, there she is. Are you planning to attend? Yeah, I'd say it's well worth it.
Anything for train commissioners?
There's some downlancing in the middle of January.
All right, Tom, County Administrator Controller.
You'll see that it is time for us to redo our county property liability insurance agreement with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. We have been a member as a self-funded organization through the MMRMA for my entire career, and we were one of the first members of that authority. In my mind, MMRMA is just second to none. I have good news for you today. Our premium is going down 7.7%. I probably budgeted a maybe a 3% to 4% or 5% increase, so there's some extra money there. We will actually have a reduction in our premium of over $11,500. Our total premium, so we have two aspects of our program. The Ways and Means Committee, and maybe some of the board members will remember that every quarter I bring our loss funds, our deposit, member retention fund balances to you. And we have had a pretty successful maintaining that balance over the last several years. We add $50,000 as part of the premium we pay to MMRMA, actually goes into our loss fund. We have a balance in there of usually between $400,000 and $420,000. So our premium, when you look at the premium lineup in the budget, you'll see about a $200,000 expense. But it's actually, it's actually.
a two hundred thousand dollar expense, but it's actually, it's actually budgeted at probably a hundred and fifty. Or exactly, the actual premium is budgeted at a hundred and fifty because fifty thousand goes into our loss fund, which is basically your money on deposit that's invested by the MMRMA. But I will tell you that our total premium, not including the member loss fund deposit, is going to be for next year a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seventy-four dollars. But immediately upon renewal in January, once you say yes to this, which I highly recommend, the MMRMA has another program in existence that's called the Net Asset Distribution. They basically look at, even though they're not a profit insurance company, their board members consist of people like you and I, administrators and elected officials. In fact, Fabian DeZacki, the Mason County Administrator, is Vice Chair of the MMRMA Board. And they started this program several years ago and they distribute back, the easiest way for me to explain it is some of their excess funds, profits, so to speak, kind of like the profit sharing program, I guess, if it was a private organization.
It's like being in the cola.
Yeah.
Yeah. But our premium will be a hundred and thirty, and they've had that for the last several years and we've, we've almost paid zero premium for the last two or three years because we get back as much or more than what we paid. Our premium is going to be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seventy-four dollars. Our net asset distribution in January will be a hundred and thirty-four thousand six oh one. So now your four thousand dollars, you paid for all your property and liability insurance for about four thousand dollars. Plus, I announced earlier that you received a thirty-eight thousand dollar grant because they have about a million dollar program that they give out in what's called Risk Avoidance Program Grant. And I announced earlier that we're going to receive thirty-eight thousand dollars. So I don't know how you can go wrong with MMRMA. We have a stop loss of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which means we could have twenty losses, liability losses, in the next year from July to July. For some reason, that runs July to July. And we would pay no more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of our loss fund in any given year. The rest then would be picked up by reinsurance by the authority. Whenever we get sued or whatever, I receive all kinds of information as to how much we're paying out in attorney fees and everything else, but we never have to pay the bill. It comes from our loss fund. And so it's really a very good program. Like I said, our maximum exposure is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. They actually increased the data breach coverage from a million to five million for next year. Our total liability coverage is fifteen million dollars, which is very, very good. And so we have to fill out a simple renewal questionnaire every year where we outline our property and our personal property values and our vehicles and everything else and answer some questions. But they even, they even send people to every couple of years and appraise our buildings for replacement value. There are just so many, and the training that is, takes place at our level and especially at the law enforcement and jail level is, is second to none. I know that Steve Mazala actually sits on the jail committee at the MMRMA. And so we have some involvement out of Manistee County. It's fantastic and we have a very good risk manager. In my thirty years, I had his dad, now I have him, which is Craig Manser out of the Detroit area. And I know Craig very, very well, known him for thirty years. And if we have a question, he answers it anytime we need it. So I highly recommend that you take action to renew our property liability coverage with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority for the two thousand seventeen year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Motion support. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Danz?
Yes.
Commissioner. Ms. Schachter?
Yes.
County on TV and saw how little the administrator talked at their meeting and I thought, you know, time you need to shut up a little bit more.
What else would be good, Tom?
The old chair, the old chair used to have some duct tape.
All right, I guess that brings us up to individual commissioners. That's good then.
No, I just want to mention Kenny Knowsis and anyone here that knew Evelyn Colby, she passed away.
She died.
On Sunday, I think, Saturday or Sunday.
I did think.
Actually, so that's all about that.
Mr. Bergstrom? There's a couple of things here. Central Wellness Network has got a drive recognition presentation. It's going to be at the National Wellness Center and also the Benzine Community Resource Center. They have a commitment, but it looks like it'd be interesting, so be interested. I don't, I've probably all got this, but there's now a report put out by the National League of Cities and NICO, the County, National County Organization. It says prescription for action, local leadership, any opioid crisis, major problem. And just want to make that, I don't know if you got that email, but there's a whole study that this joint entity put together on the opioid epidemic. And if somebody wants that information, I'll email the contact or you can print it out directly too, that's the other thing.
I just got an email actually from Kenny here from the Health Department here. Evelyn's funeral is going to be tomorrow at one P.M. in the Redmond Christian Reformed Church in Fremont. There will be a visitation tonight at four to seven at the Cogan Funeral Home in Fremont. I just got that.
Twenty years was she involved in coming?
Twenty.
She was probably involved in the COVID.
I know, I think she was Chair of the Wunser Dick, the Regional Commission that serves Mason County, three counties for Meskegan and some areas.
Mr. Marshall?
I'll be at Sarah.
Mr. Schachter?
I just have to say how tickled I am to be back.
Would like to have you.
I really miss the environment, you know, so.
The only thing I've got the report on is the Calvert Drive sale is moving forward for the Road Commission.
I got one question. I thought we were going to talk about the Fair Board financial third of Blackfish.
Yes. What I would like to, what I would like to say there is they were fourteen thousand in the hole after the fair last year. They're four thousand to the good this year, so that's an eighteen thousand dollar turnaround. So I would hope that the next year, the board would give that some consideration. They are trying. It takes a while to build something up from nothing.
The only question I have.
Wait.
The only question.
Everybody else up forward?
The only reason I'm asking that question though is because I have heard that they have closed the horse barn and sold all the stuff off.
No, that's not, that's not correct. The, do I add a little bit to that?
You know, I would have to defer to my colleagues. I know Barjewall has been working pretty closely with them to help them get reorganized in conjunction with Deadlaws. So I would need to get up to speed, so.
Okay, well, what I know about this is the Horse Council and the Fair Board for some reason have a conflict.
I heard that.
There's been a conflict for, well, three years I've been on this, been on it for a number of years, I guess. The Horse Council did not go to the fair this year, okay? The horse barn has not been closed. The mats that were in there were removed because they were purchased by either 4-H or the Horse Council, I'm not sure what. But the horse barn is still open and it will be open.
Okay. Well, it's going to come, they're going to come.
My goal, my goal is to try to get these three groups working together again. Unfortunately, I don't see that's going to be the case. I've talked to both the Horse Council, I've talked to the Fair Board, I've talked to the Livestock Council. And they've all got different goals and stuff like that. For some strange reason, for some reason, I guess, people in charge of those groups just don't seem to want to work together too well.
Do they have a budget too?
They're big, yeah, they got different financing, but it's very little financing. I mean, there's hardly anything to keep these guys afloat.
How does that affect that, how she, that they?
Well, that's, that's just for the Fair Board. That has nothing to do with either the Horse Council or the Livestock Council.
So they're separate entities.
Correct. Yeah. And a lot of the, like the Livestock and Horse Council are all run by 4-H rules and regulations, correct?
Well, wasn't the Fair, the councils, yes, as far as the Fair goes, no. I mean, we're just members of the Fair, but the Fair is separate from 4-H. But yes, the councils are governed by 4-H rules.
Yes.
I want to claim we should be on the Fair Board.
And I do too.
I know why you got it. I'm just kidding.
Hell, I do too.
All right. Order. Anyway. All right, I guess with that, we're going to call the meeting. Any public comments before we do that? Jennifer, you're pretty quiet today.
I just did you know, I think Tom, recognizing Clint.
Our county clerk would like that.
Just on public comment, I just wanted to say that the election season is done and everything went pretty well for elections that we had in two thousand and sixteen. Congratulations to those of you that were reelected and elected.
I'd like to just add, I see on a daily basis what goes on in the clerk's office, especially over the last several months. And I, you know, they, they come to all the committee meetings, they're dealing with elections, they're dealing with courts. It's just unbelievable what goes on in the county clerk's office. And for that matter, the county treasurer's office, if you walk in there this time of the year when they're doing tax bills, it's, it's just amazing what goes on in this building and you have some very dedicated people, elected officials, I just wanted to say that. And congratulations to all of them.
Have they called Michigan yet officially?
Yes.
I thought they did a week or so ago, but then they find out they didn't. When was it called?
I'm not sure when, but I know the State Board of Counselors is meeting in twenty-eight to canvass the election, so I'm sure it's.
All right. But we're adjourned. So you everybody on the twentieth are suing.
All right. We're adjourned.
See everybody on the twentieth, our suing.
All right. Come on. Relax. I said, I said.
All right. We're adjourned. So you everybody on the twentieth, our suing.
All right. Come on. Relax. I said, I said.
All right. We're adjourned. So you everybody on the twentieth, our suing.
All right. Come on. Relax. I said, I said.
All right. We're adjourned. So you everybody on the twentieth, our suing.
All right. Come on. Relax. I said, I said.
All right. We're adjourned. So you everybody on the twentieth, our suing.
All right. Come on. Relax. I said, I said. 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 I said, I said.